All right, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and second? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, so first up, we have item 2.01, Student Board Representatives. And for this, we are going to go ahead and move down to the floor.
...
Thank you all for being here today. All right, whenever you're ready, Ms. Broken.
Remind me never to go after student reps. This is such a tough act to follow, guys. I'm gonna try to be fast and funny. Um, Dr. Whaley, can I get my presentation? Okay, perfect. All right, thank you, guys. It's my pleasure to present to you a follow-up to our communications audit and some information about public relations strategic planning. So, some quick background for you guys. I know some of our board members were here for our audit last fall and some are probably new to this concept, but last year we engaged, right around this time, actually, we engaged with the National School Public Relations Association to conduct a comprehensive audit of communication practices in the district. We had not had a communications audit since 2018, and even in 2018, it was kind of adjacent to doing some sentiment polling for a bond, an upcoming bond issue. So it was time, so to speak, to look at our, our communication practices from a global level. And so what that included was an external auditor coming to the district, spending time in Lee Summit over the course of three days in September of 2023. They held ten focus groups, five internal and five external. They reviewed PR materials and communication practices across the district. And they helped us conduct a, a, a survey that was nationally benchmarked with other school districts that they've conducted audits of, to try to give us a sense of where we stand up nationally with other districts. And this essentially provided us formal primary research that we were able to embed into strategic planning this year. That audit found some strengths of the district. And so one of those things is just that they applauded us for really our commitment to communication and for having sort of a robust investment in public relations. At the, at the same time, they found seven areas that they saw some room for improvement, that they wanted to call to our attention. And those seven areas are on the screen there. And so what I'm gonna do tonight is I'm going to share a big takeaway from each of our recommendation areas. I'm gonna tell you what our stakeholders told us success would look like in terms of meeting needs in each of those areas. And I'm gonna give you, indicate to you the direction we're going to and being responsive to those areas. Quickly, though, I wanted to make sure you know that we did some additional research after receiving our, the results of our audit in January of 2024. We took our audit findings on the road, because we wanted to make sure that before we planned responsive actions to communications audit findings, that we shared them with our community and we made sure we listened to what they would want us to prioritize, because this was an eighty-page report with many, many action steps. We knew we not, we wouldn't be able to complete them all at once or all in one year, that we would have to take it in chunks. And we wanted to get a sense of, what was our community's priorities in terms of how we should approach responding to the audit? So, we took it on the road. We talked to groups like Business Roundtable, Systems Alignment, which is essentially all department and building leaders in the district, Team Lee Summit, Teacher Advisory Committee, and all of our Student Advisory Councils, who particularly gave us advice and guidance on high school websites and some high school-related tools. And, and I'm gonna come back to this, their feedback emphasized one of our recommendations related to standardizing and streamlining communications overwhelmingly. This is what these groups told us to prioritize first. So why don't you keep, keep that in the back of your mind, because we're gonna come back to that. Okay. All right, so the first recommendation, update LSR seven's public relations strategic plan. This is the first recommendation from our auditors. So the big takeaway here, and I, I remember there's some comments made when we presented the audit about how complimentary the auditors were of the PR team. But I think this section is probably the most inside baseball for PR people. And one of the things that it was essentially saying, it was, it was kind of calling out the PR team for needing to do a better job of demonstrating its commitment to making data-driven or research-driven decisions when it comes to achieving communication goals. It was acknowledging that we, that we do that for some of our bigger projects, like a bond campaign, for example. And it was saying we need to do a better job of demonstrating that with our daily operations or our day-to-day functions. And so, one of the things that I wanted to provide to you tonight is, what does success look like? So what we were able to glean after analyzing data from the audit is essentially what our auditors, when it comes to best practices, and they look at benchmarks across the country, and also our stakeholders directly through the survey and, and focus group feedback, were telling us what it would look like for success when it comes to public relations strategic planning. And so you see that on the right of the screen there. So C-SIP alignment, wanted to talk a little bit about that. One thing that I wanted to let you know is that we are embedding all the research from our communications audit and all the follow-up analysis that we've done into the PR department's strategic plan, but it's also already been embedded into this, to the C-SIP. So Strategies nine through sixteen are aligning perfectly with these comms audit recommendations. So as we go through the C-SIP cycle, you will get updates on how we're doing with the communication audit every time you get a C-SIP update. And so, as we, as we do that, it's important that you guys know that we're kind of embedding measurable objectives and research-based practices and, and looking at other practices across the country into some of those goals. And so you'll see that throughout, out the year as we report progress. Okay, recommendation two was addressing information overload through standardization and streamlining. This is probably, if there is a big rock from the communications audit, this is it. There is no theme that emerged stronger from our communications audit than this one. It shows up throughout all of our findings in this report, and it was the big theme that resonated when we did that follow-up kind of roadshow of comms audit findings. This is, this is what our community is concerned about. It's what we heard over and over and over again. And so our auditors are advising us to do things like review the tools and communication practices that use to communicate with parents and look at adding here and consolidating there. But what we wanted to do is take it a step further. And so one thing that I'm doing this year is really standing up two process action teams related to responding directly to this finding. One is a Communications Standards and Streamlining Committee with the specific goal of addressing parent, parent information overload. That met for the first time last week, and so we have a representative group of parents and staff and community members who are meeting to analyze this issue from now until December and are gonna come to make some recommendations to SLT about how to address this. They're analyzing the comms data, they're having their own discussions, they're gonna talk about solutions. And so this is a really big priority for us. As you can see, I think that audit survey responded with, sums up our issue really with that quote. And that's just something that's been reinforced. And that's just something that's been reinforced again and again by our stakeholders and by the folks who are serving on that committee. The second one is Social Media Policy and Guidelines Committee. This is sort of running parallel to that group. But Board Policy KB advises the district to distribute guidelines for communicating effectively on social media, staff guidelines. It's been a while since we have really looked at doing that and updating that work. And so this was an important part. If we're standing up communication standards over here, we wanted to specifically look at that in the area of social media. And you'll see different places, I'm sure. I expect that I'll see different places where that intersects with other work we're doing. Like, we've heard social media just come up with our student reps and some of the things they were sharing with us. That is running under a similar timeline to our communications committee, September through December. So it's my hope that I'll have more information to share about potential recommendations or next steps by our second semester. Communications Training to Staff, Recommendation Three. This is a really important one, but it is the one where I predict the least amount of progress this year, and that is just because it is really the secondary step to establishing communication standards and revamping those standards in the district. If we're going to comprehensively empower staff to, to communicate throughout the district, we need to understand what we're asking them to do and, and what our values and principles are gonna be throughout the district. Effectively inform and engage diverse families. This is coming from a ta, there was two big takeaways in this area. One was a slight dip in trust for Black families in the areas of communication. And the other was a lack of evidence of a, of the district having a systemic approach to communicating with families that do not speak English. And so that lack of trust was related to, that lack of trust piece was related to not like specific communication tools or, or communication practices, but perceptions about how our district values input from non-white families and uses that input. And so our auditors were the first ones to tell you, we are not DEI consultants. We don't necessarily, we're not necessarily digging deep in this area, but you need to know that those perceptions are out there and you should do some more research and, and explore this, because it's coming up. It's bubbling up a little bit here. And so, one of the things that Dr. Wilson and I plan to do is collaborate with the dignity teams in some way this year to talk about how we enhance the effectiveness of the district in this way. We also need to understand the problem. We haven't, we, it's been presented to us in sort of a, of a a more abstract way, and we need to define it and really understand what's kind of going on with that perception. And the other is that we need to embed some specific strategic objectives and strategies for reaching diverse families, particularly families that don't speak English as their first language. And so, something that you're gonna see us do, and, and Dr. Wilson has led these efforts, and certainly Ms. Sanders started them in the district, is support the successful rollout of a new translation tools platform in the district and empowering staff to use it. Area, aspects of this finding are kind of bubbling up in our communications committee. So I think equitable communications will be something that, that Standards Committee tackles too. And then we're trying to do a little bit of empowering our staff to do better in the area of digital accessibility and making things ADA compliant, particularly on the internet. And so these are things that we expect to be reported back to you as part of progress for this area. Our next recommendation was nurturing a culture of two-way communication throughout the district. This was an interesting one, because what came out so clearly in our audit was that people trust our communication. They see and appreciate our commitment to communication. But there are some, there are some trust issues specifically around how input is used and valued. So our community is the first one to say, LSR, I, generally I trust the information I get. I see that LSR seven does a lot of engagement, but I'm not convinced the district comprehensively takes that input, and I can't always see how they use it. And so, this was something the auditors were flagging for us, encouraging us to be transparent about these communications audit findings. And also just continuing our tradition of outreach to all of our stakeholders, but then circling back and making sure people understand what we do with that engagement. And so, one thing I'm excited about is just starting to model that with our new Dinner with the Board format. So you can see really that touched so many pieces of what success looks like for us, parents as partners, students as partners, community as partners, internal, external outreach. And so when we have really big transparent commitment to engagement like that, there's success. So we saw, it's actually a two-hundred-and-thirty percent increase in Dinner with the Board participation. Your average participation last year was twenty people. This year it was sixty-seven. And so we've kind of laid some important groundwork together, and I think we can continue to do that. And our auditors had some suggestions for how we could kind of continue in that trajectory. Certainly, we have been transparent about the comms audit results. We took it on the road. We've also shared it in multiple newsletters last year and this year. The one where we first sent, shared comms audit results had our highest open rate, so people are actually clicking and reading it. The highest open rate of the year last year was to see what the audit results said. And certainly, we're being transparent with our, our communications committee when it comes to making determinations related to outreach and then deciding how we'll communicate the changes we come up with together once that committee does that work. Some of that's related to, some of the responsive actions related to two-way outreach have to do with PR just assigning better data-driven goals aligned to events. And so, increasing Dinner with the Board participation. We are attempting to improve building represent, representation for Parent Academy graduates. We know that we'll do a lot of important engagement with our CAC for the bond in the hopes that we have a solid recommendation for you in December. And certainly, we have our C-SIP goal, which is a goal really about expanding the, the footprint of individual people who engage with us. So if we know that if we have a hundred people, just making up a number, who engage with us, we want to expand the number of unique people who engage with us before 2027, if that makes sense, and not pick the same people for engagement over and over again, actually track and ensure that we're inviting new people to the table when we have engagement that invites people into district decision-making. And so that's the purpose and the spirit behind that C-SIP goal, and I'm excited to start tracking numbers for you and sharing them out as we go through the next three years. Two left. Expand and Enhance Board of Education Communications. What I love about this goal, it was not a negative or a critique. What it, the audit essentially said is our public wants to engage with the board. The board wants to engage with the public. Strengthen that relationship. Go for it. Here's some recommendations. And so, one of the things they talked about was just building a process together where you review your own communication policies on an annual basis and some of the protocols associated with them. They also gave PR some very specific suggestions about potentially revising the format of our seven news board, like the recaps of the Board of Education meetings to make them a little bit easier for the public to read, enhancing the Board of Education presence on the website, things like that. And so, these are some of my team. My, my team's kind of researching different options right now and hoping to make some of those changes before the second semester as well. Again, just wanna highlight Dinner with the Board. Obviously, that is a engagement piece that can be related to the two-way outreach goal or enhancing Board of Education communications. Okay, finally, our final recommendation was combat misinformation and disinformation. This is, this is our, this is a recommendation that probably had the least specificity to LSR seven. Most of the feedback from the auditors had to do with this misinformation and disinformation are issues that school districts are facing across the country, and here are some best practices for dealing with them. And so one of the things my team actually has a meeting planned in the next couple of weeks is to take this, take these kind of broad findings and suggestions, bring some more specificity to things that we're encountering in LSR seven and, and try to bring align those to maybe more data-driven goals, because right now that's a little bit more of an abstract finding for us. And finally, just wanted to give you a timeline for responsive actions. Like I said, our auditors were very clear that this is not something that you're gonna take this eighty-page report with all of these action steps and implement them all in a year. And so they recommended that we take a little bit at a time. I've taken a look at our entire audit, and I think roughly speaking, we'll be able to accomplish about a third of the recommended action steps for the next three years over the course of the C-SIP cycle. And so that's embedded into our strategic plan. You'll get updates that, on that throughout our C-SIP process. But the goal, and you can see that in the second piece, is essentially to follow the C-SIP cycle and be able to say in June 2027 that we feel really good about how we've responded to our communications audit findings. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I apologize. We are running a little low on time, so I just wanna let board members know. We need to do, we need to take a break as soon as possible before the six-thirty meeting, but I do see one question from board member Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. I really appreciate all this work. It's amazing. I did have just a couple of questions about the committee. I'm just curious how the committee members were chosen and how, how, how you would find out about the opportunity to be a part of the committee.
And you mean the Standardizing and Streamlining Committee, not our, our internal focus groups from the comms group? From the comms audit?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, we have four, about forty people who are participating on that. And we, I held an open application process for that committee. We promoted it throughout August and September in our newsletters, on social media, and, and put out the word through some of our groups. And so we had about fifteen parent slots. We had more than fifty people apply. And so, we invited fifteen people to the process through applications. We held five spots specifically for Parent Academy graduates. And that has just been something that we have embedded into the Parent Academy experience is, hey, one of the perks of going through Parent Academy is we'll invite you to other, other things and other ways to get involved. And then we had, so that, that, that leads us to nineteen parents. We have ten teachers slash staff members. Most of them applied. I believe all teachers and staff members applied. And then I asked eight administrators to be part of the process. So that should equal roughly forty.
Thank you. My, my follow-up to that really quickly is, are the subgroups that you identified in here, are they a part of? Have you found that the subgroups that you identified that are struggling the most with the communication or the lack of trust? Are they identified within the groups that are taking part in the, in the committee?
I think I understand what you're asking. And I would say, from an African-American perspective, yes. So that first, the two subgroups we talked about were Black families and ELL families. And so, from, for the first piece, yes. And the second piece, we have staff who are ELL teachers serving on that committee. We, I don't believe we have fam, participants who speak English as a second language on that committee, but that's one of the things that's very interesting that the, the audit finds is families who speak English as a second language often aren't engaging in that kind of extra district engagement with us at all. So they're very focused on, how do I do the business of, of getting through school and navigating school? And so one of the things that we need to look globally and much more of a long-term goal is how do we make, how do we meet basic needs and basic communication needs first? And then we can expand to wrapping people into some of the additional supplemental engagement that we do, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
All right, next, we have item two point zero three on the agenda. Dr. Buck, is this something that we could delay to another work session?
We certainly could put it on October third. There would be no harm in doing so. Not a problem.
Okay. And with that, let's go ahead and dismiss from the work.